So. Okay, never mind. I was gonna say that we have a call, but it looks like we do.
Yeah, so I'd like to thank you for coming, thank you to our folks from Talent for being here today. I'm gonna turn it just to make sure you're following whatever process you need to follow, your work is going to take a role, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. So, Council of Penamra?
Here.
Council of Ryder?
Here.
Council of Pesteza is not present. Council of Ayers is not present. Council of Carron Millard is not present. And Mayor Derris Flood?
Here.
Mayor, there's no more.
Thank you. Just for the benefit of you, do you want everyone to introduce themselves?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll just, we'll do some.
People will be watching later, too.
Yeah, we'll do some brief introductions. And I know we, many of us know, but I know there's also some, some new faces in the room, so.
I'm Rebecca Weathers.
Sarah Crawford.
Red Daniel.
Don Watson.
Polly Fairman.
Michael Campbell. Yes, we also have these.
Oh, great, Superintendent, and Jonathan.
Jonathan Williams.
I want to join in.
Oh, okay. Jerry Harland, CSU man with the district's. And Jonathan is the hydrogeologist who did the environmental study on the property, so, yes.
And the councilor's, uh, Council of Pesteza was planning to be here, he got called out of town, Perry Miller got sick, and Anna Ayers is, is chairing a different meeting tonight, so they, but they all know that it's being recorded and that they can get to the recordings.
Very good, absolutely.
Yeah.
Perry Muller, City Manager.
Nice to see you. Welcome, Gary. Couple weeks on? Two, three weeks? Month?
Almost, almost into three months.
Okay. Way off.
Good point.
We feel extraordinarily lucky to have Gary with us. His experience has just been phenomenal. He gets the ground running and we are, we are in good hands.
Awesome.
Not great.
Very good. Okay. Uh, yeah, we, uh, thanks for having this. I know we talked, our staff talked, and leadership is, uh, chatted about this, this project and the UGB annotation. Some things came up about prior use, and we've been doing some due diligence and sent, I think you sent the information on for Phase One and Phase Two to, um, and I just want to turn it over to the expert, Jonathan, because he has, uh, had been doing the studies and he can share kind of his analysis, and then we'll, I think we'll entertain any questions or, um, yeah, if you have any thoughts. So, Jonathan, it would be great.
So, I'm gonna give you the, a good synopsis, and then if anybody wants to get the report, my plan is gonna be available. There's tons of data in there, so I don't want to bore people to death with all the boring details. But we got brought on last July to, to start off with a Phase One environmental site assessment, which basically means we don't do any sample collection. We just, we were best to get the history using environmental database records, deed records, et cetera, uh, for a property to see what's going on there. And we had heard through the grapevine that there were concerns that the property had historically been used for orchards and concerns about pesticide, uh, applications. I guess, I guess let me back up a little bit. So, I've been a registered geologist in the state of Oregon since nineteen ninety-six, and, uh, been in the Medford area for about twenty-five years now, uh, under graduate degree in geology, and then went graduate school for geology and meteor geology. And so I've been doing environmental consulting now for about thirty years, mostly in Oregon. Um, we have, uh, currently, I think, eight different projects in the Medford area associated with historical orchards, because you may be aware, there's a lot of orchard properties that were bought within the urban growth boundary being redeveloped for residential purposes or commercial purposes. Uh, so we'd work with DEQ and those clients to make sure we collect the appropriate data and so that we're protective of future occupants, uh, or users of those properties. And one of those actually included, uh, we did work for Oregon State University for their, their old experimental pear orchard of, of South State Road Experiment Station Room, and, um, that one had quite a few challenges with it. That's gonna be ultimately redeveloped for residential purposes, and we're actually working with the current owner of that property to get that remediated and cleaned up. So, one of the things that we, one of the more valuable pieces of data that we get is historical aerial photographs. And so, not knowing anything about this, I actually stopped at the Talent Historical Society and talked to a very helpful person there that kind of got me started, and they said, oh, talk to somebody at SOU, and then I went over to the Oregon State University Extension, uh, folks, uh, on Hamley Farm and communicated with them, and the reason for an older gentleman retired was incredibly helpful and described what's going on out here. So what we know about the property, you can see we've got the Culver Field, Almated Red, is that it was an agronomy station, not used for orchards. And so, we didn't, we requested, but they did not receive any of the uh, spray records. They just, they couldn't find them, because that's usually the gold standard for us, because we can look through that and figure out what should we sample for. They didn't have any records, which is not surprising. We've only worked with the Hillcrest Orchards, uh, which is now in the urban growth boundary. They kept very detailed spray records almost for a hundred years, so we know what they, they use there. We didn't have any spray records here. There is a, uh, Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, has very rigorous list of pesticides that they want to store for. And so pesticides, I should point out, uh, up until, uh, right after World War Two, there really weren't any organic pesticides. Most people today think of like Diolgrin or DDT, you know, the smelly stuff you get at the grain shop or whatever that you apply. Well, prior to World War Two, there really weren't that many important pesticides. But people were using a lot of metals, and there was, there was a compound called lead arsenate, and that has historically been applied since the eighteen hundreds to apples and, uh, all kinds of different fruits. You could still use it today. In fact, you can use lead arsenate on your orchard as an organic pesticide. So if you buy organic pears or apples, chances are they probably apply lead arsenate to it. So the challenge with a lot of these pesticides is that the lead and arsenic, they don't go anywhere. They don't reach out. They, they accumulate on the shallow clays typically the upper twelve to twenty-four inches. And the same thing with your organic pesticides like DEE or DDT, they, they absorb onto the organic carbon in the soil. They have an affinity for that. And what we found across multiple projects in Rock Valley is that you get attenuation of both the metals and the organic class, synthetic organic, uh, compounds in the upper six to eighteen inches, and that's usually a refinement problem. So, we went back and looked at these photos, maybe just kind of scroll through. So nineteen thirty, so the, the agronomy station was reportedly operational from nineteen eleven to nineteen fifty-eight, is my recollection. So this is the first aerial photo nineteen thirty-nine. Maybe go to the next one?
Can I explain what an agronomy station is?
It's a, but what they were doing is they were doing different plots. You can see there's more plots on this uh, photo here. So I think it was mainly grown, like, trying different kinds of, having different cover crops. Uh, not fruits, had different cover crops applied to different levels of irrigation, different amounts of fertilization, and different kinds, and different, uh, hybrids or, or reeds of grasses. So, my understanding, looking through the records, is that in the forties and fifties and thirties, what they're mainly focused on here is what kind of alfalfa would do the best, not only for feed, for cattle, uh, and horses, but also there was a big value to growing alfalfa and then harvesting seed and selling that seed for, to other farmers. So, it looks like, and.
Thank you.
And, no, no problem.
We're pretty relaxed.
It's a small group, so feel free to stop here. Um, and so you can see in between the, if you go back to the other one, they had bigger plots, but, you know, they, you can see they mixed it up. And so, unfortunately, there's no great records, but we know that they were doing various cover crops and testing the varieties and the amount of irrigation and how they fertilized it, and potentially, uh, with what kind of pesticides you can see. You can also see in these photos that the, much of the property around Culver Field was used as orchards. Um, specifically now, you can see to the south, in nineteen thirty-nine, there was no orchards, but maybe scroll to the next one. This is the last photo where we can see the agronomy station present. But if you kind of just maybe go through somewhat slowly on the next ones, you'll can, you can see, you know, that point, I think, the county on the property in nineteen sixty-seven. So, I don't know, Hayfield. And then if you, as you scroll through, uh, you'll get to the point where we see an orchard starting to be developed, uh, immediately to the south. You can also see the development of the baseball fields and the bus barn on that property. So that's all orchards to the south now. So based on what we, the, kind of the background, and we did go out to the site to do a Phase One environmental site assessment. The objective really is to tell our clients, you have, for lack of a better term, and I call it an environmental red flag. We call it a recognized environmental condition is the, the terminology, but, you know, are there any concerns on your property that are worth investigating, or you should be concerned, uh, either from a liability standpoint or from a a health standpoint to the people that are on that property. So at the conclusion of the Phase One, we basically said, okay, it was not a pear orchard, that's good. But it was an agronomy station, and we don't know what's out there. And there's no, there's no available records. The only thing I got from the, the Oregon State University gentleman that retired was that they probably did apply pesticides, but he didn't know what kinds or how much. So, the conclusion of the Phase One was that we recommend you do a Phase Two and collect some soil samples for all types of analytes that are required under DEQ's guidance for when an agricultural property is redeveloped for some other purpose. And so there was an extensive list. So we went out and we dug sixteen, twenty-seven test pits with a backhoe across the property. Now, it's a big property, right? It's forty something acres. So, uh, we were very clear in the, in the Phase Two, uh, proposal, uh, that we submitted that, you know, we're not gonna go out there and we're not gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on lap piece, because it gets really expensive when we, when we start analyzing lots and lots of soil samples. We're gonna do, uh, let's call it a five thousand foot view out of assessment, right? So twenty-seven test pits sounds like a lot, but it's a big piece of property. So the data that we collected realistically are probably the, the be all of end all. Um, there probably gonna have to be some additional sample collection, uh, done to firm things up, but what we've seen on orchard, just better than now in agronomy station, is that typically you're applying the materials in a uniform manner. So it's not like you get little, little hotspots of contamination in one area. Over the years, it's kind of spread out and it's typically generally consistent across an entire property. So we, we dug those twenty-seven, seven test pits and collected, uh, we mixed a lot of the samples to make a quote-unquote composite sample because of the cost to run a single soil sample for all of the pesticides constituents. It's about nine hundred dollars. So it's not cheap. So, we did our best to find a balance between being thorough in our initial valuation and not breaking somebody's bank. So, we collected all this data, broke the unit up, the whole property up until we called it decision units for approximately equal areas. And what we found is that there are low levels of arsenic uh, above the, the regional background. We have in all across Oregon, and especially in the Medford area and the Clamath Mountains region, uh, we have naturally occurring arsenic levels. So a lot of people have arsenic in their water, and the, the actual, the naturally occurring arsenic level in the soil in this area exceeds what DEQ would like to even have for on people's residential properties. But I can guarantee you, I can go anywhere in Jackson County and collect a sample of soil, and the arsenic concentration will be above what DE says, DEQ says the risk level is for residential property. But DEQ recognizes they can't tell everybody they need to get rid of that soil. Um, and those risk levels are based on incredibly conservative uh, assumptions about how long somebody's gonna live in a place, how many teaspoons of dirt a little kid eats uh, in the backyard, et cetera. So the, the numbers of the risk levels are very conservative. But basically, all the data that we collected out there, the concern was arsenic uh, over most of, about seventy-five percent of the property in the upper twelve to eighteen inches above the conservative risk value and above the background. So there's a definitive signature of arsenic and lead in the soil out here that's not naturally occurring. So that I'm highly confident that arsenate was applied to, out there on this property in the past, but concentrations aren't that high. And lead was elevated, but the lead exceedances for, uh, risk concerns were about the potential for leaching to groundwater. But like I said, the arsenic and the lead don't really leach out. In fact, by the time we got down to about twenty-four, eighteen or twenty-four inches, the lead had gone attenuated to below, uh, naturally occurring, uh, levels in the area. So, so not a concern. The one issue, I know there are three wells on the property, and so once I saw those lead concentrations, it's like, you guys have wells out here, we should test the wells to make sure that there's not elevated concentrations of lead, just to be sure. Uh, even though we saw lead attenuate with depth in the shallow soil, we wanted to make sure. So we had the, um, school district staff collect groundwater samples from all three of the wells, and there's a table in the Phase Two report. Two of the wells, we were below the method reporting limit for lead, and one of the wells had a reported concentration, but it was a good ten times lower than any kind of action levels. And correctly if I'm wrong, Brent, I don't think any of that water is being used for you know, drinking.
I know.
So, anyway, so we, we went that extra mile to look for that. So, take home message, there are issues. First, primarily the concern is low levels of arsenic. As a registered geologist in the state, if I, I've got a code of ethics that I have to apply, uh, or abide by, and if I find something in soil or groundwater that I think is that, that determines imminent threat to human health of the environment, if I find something like that, I automatically tell my client, I'm, I've got concerns, you need to talk to DEQ immediately, because there's a, an actual risk that people get sick here. I don't see that here. Um, but the, the other thing, we compared the, the analytical results in the soil for the pesticides is to quote-unquote clean fill values. So if you exceed a clean fill value in soil, that basically means you can reuse that soil on site, uh, as long as it's not a risk, human health risk level. But if you need to, uh, move that soil for any kind of construction purposes, let's say you're gonna put a building out there, and it's the clay soil, and there's a geotechnical concern for the building, the foundation, and you need to get that soil out of there, you can't just haul it across the street to the, somebody that says, oh, I need to hunch a soil for fill or something. You need to either send it to the landfill, that becomes prohibitively expensive very quickly, or you can haul that soil to a quarry, and they can put it in, in, into a quarry, uh, and then that usually works, the, the cost of that is much less, and you can also end up bringing back for a construction project, you're often gonna need four-inch rock or three-quarter minus or whatever for foundations or a parking lot. So, you can do that consistently. My understanding, and I haven't seen any kind of master plan, and I'm sure there's something out there that I'm not reviewing, but often what we do on these projects is try to reuse that soil on the property. And so, uh, I believe there is, and now I'm getting more into the land use planning thing, I believe there's an agricultural buffer requirement because that orchard to the south and probably the property to the west looks like it is agriculturally viewed. Uh, I can't remember the zoning. The, the most cost-effective solution is probably if any soil needs to be moved for construction purposes in the future, that you place it uh, along one of those boundaries where the Jackson County is, where the city is gonna require. Is this in the city limits or outside? I can't remember.
In the urban reserve, yeah. So it's in the county.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, assuming there is some kind of agricultural buffer, then that would be a wise, you're not gonna be able to develop that in, that anyway in those areas would be my expectation. Um, and so, that would, the logical cost-effective solution to dealing with, uh, the soil during future development based on what I know would be to place it in one of these, you know, required buffers that might, I can't remember if it's fifty or a hundred feet, so. Uh, the other recommendation, um, that we made in the report was DEQ has what they call their voluntary cleanup pathway. Um, we haven't shared this information with DEQ, uh, again, because I don't see the imminent threat to human health of the environment. If uh, everybody decides it would be appropriate to get DEQ involvement to uh, make sure all the citizens are comfortable, uh, with the approach that's being taken. Uh, and oftentimes we do this on properties even for private entities when they're redeveloping, because if they want to sell that property or they have to get a loan to build something, oftentimes banks are gonna require a no further action letter from DEQ to confirm, not just me the hired consultant, but to have a state professional, you know, environmental professionals to say, yes, we agree that the approach that's being taken is protective of human health, then you can get what DEQ calls a no further action letter, and that gives comfort to all parties involved that, that, uh, we're being protective of, uh, people that are gonna be using the property.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So hopefully I bore you to death.
Really interesting. I, I read the entire, um, environmental report. I read the entire sixteen-page SOBS report, which actually speaks to a lot of what they did on the property. They, they traveled all over the world in the thirties, or even earlier than that, nineteen eleven and twelve, going to China and, and bringing back pear trees to, to plant and see which pear stock. It's actually really, it was, it was the most riveting sixteen-page treat I've had in a long time, so. Which is kind of sad, I know, but, um, it's just historical.
Yeah, it was actually, it was pretty good.
So, um, yeah, at this point, I think it'd be appropriate to open it up to any question that you might have, or.
Well, the only question I have, I mean, thank you so much for the great report and also appreciation to the school district for sending us the environmentals. I had a chance to go through them yesterday, and I was, uh, you know, um, uh, I have a lot of confidence that the school district is doing what they, uh, you know, doing the due diligence that, that they said they would, and uh, and I really appreciate that, and providing some of that information is helpful for all of us. Um, the only question I really have is that, it sounds to me like you, that your study includes, uh, includes information, having the information of the southern, it's the SOBS report, I call it the SOBS report, Southern Oregon Branch Experimental Station, and there was some reference to, um, some, some other chemicals and, um, uh, around pear, uh, some of the pear experimentation that they did in that report. I just want to make sure that when you were doing your studies that you were informed by that report or, or it, or maybe consequently.
Yeah, I didn't actually find that, that report that, uh, I can't remember who shared that with me recently. I think it was John Calip shared that with me. We did not find that in our initial investigation back in July last year. We just got you know, communications, and I documented what I heard from, and talking on the phone with the senior folks from the, or the, at Hamley Farm, that it was an agronomy station, but I didn't get that sixteen-page document. I, I found that, most of that document seemed to be focused on the work that was done at the uh, experiment station farm. Um, but the list of pesticides that we looked for on the study on the Culver Fields property included a whole suite that is identified by DEQ. And so a lot of times, under these, like when we enter the voluntary cleanup pathway, it takes a while to get, DEQ is, uh, I would say, I think they actually have, I won't say adequate funding, but we work with the folks in Eugene, that's the western region in the cleanup, uh, program, and they are understaffed mainly because they don't want to hire people that are not good. And, uh, so it takes a while to get uh, a DEQ project manager to, to work with us. But the projects that we have already gotten, uh, acceptance of, we have provided them work plans before we even go out and do the sampling, that said, here's our sampling, here's how we're gonna collect the samples. And when I say work plan, he has like fifteen-page document about, this is how we're gonna do everything, so that they can see all the methods. And they approved that in a manner that was very similar to what we did here. The, the analytical suite was identical. So it's pretty, if you review the report, you'll see some pretty gory detail, uh, in, of tables. Um, so it's, it's pretty comprehensive.
Great. So I, just for clarification then, um, you, you've had an opportunity to read the report and compare it with the stuff, the list of, um, chemicals that are.
I, yeah, I reviewed that report after, you know, and that, I got that like a couple weeks ago, I want to say, before we finalized this report. But it was very general with the set of pesticides and fertilizers. So unfortunately, no. Like I said, I've only worked on one project where we actually had detailed spray records about we used these combinations of chemicals. And in those cases, uh, we retained a agricultural specialist to look through those lists, because a lot of these pesticides are relatively benign. They break down quickly, or they're not toxic to humans. Right, they're all, all those pesticides are designed to kill bugs or other vegetation parasites. And so a lot of those, there's actually a, a very good, uh, available data set on toxicology for humans. And so, you know, ninety percent of those just automatically fall away because they break down rapidly or they're not toxic to people.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that really the, the table or work that you did likely exceeds what's in this report. Do I understand what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we, well, I mean, it just said pesticides. So we went, we sampled for all the pesticides that DEQ is concerned about. If that makes sense.
It did make sense. Yeah.
And just to share, I mean, one of the recommendations is to work with DEQ and, and John and Jonathan will start trying to get in that hopper and get on that list, uh, because, because we know that'll be important, and we have, we share the same interests, so.
Oh, the, to try and get a DEQ manager to work with? Yeah.
Yeah, voluntary.
Correct. It takes a few months, uh, at a minimum. But it's important, too, because the, if, depending on the pace of the uh, project and what you plan to build out there, it can become very, very expensive. Like, we just did a project over off Cokerview, and we had to excavate six to twenty-four inches of soil over a fifty-acre area. And that means that, that same property owner has the old orchard, uh, property that's adjacent to it, that's outside of the urban growth boundary. So the soil is impacted actually much less than what we have here. And we just pushed that over onto the adjacent property, and he's gonna build a utility scale, or he's gonna lease it out to a utility scale solar company, and they'll, they'll put solar array on Paul Baker's property. But I mean, it's to, to move that soil, I wouldn't say it was, uh, you know, it was a four hundred thousand dollar bill to move all that sort of, it's a mass, you know, you're scraping all that soil, and you get, you start getting a lot of equipment and moving a lot of soil, and that was relatively cheap. If we had to take that to a quarry, then, you know, you could add another hero to that. So, um, it's good to get DEQ involved early on and, you know, make sure we've vetted all of the options, because those excavation costs become very expensive, and we want to make sure the solution, which I think will end up being, if any development that happens, you move that property into the agricultural buffer. You only move the soil once, and in that case, you're just moving below ways, and that'll be by far the least costly, but also protective.
Can I ask kind of a nerdy question as well, and then I'll hand it over to my colleague here, and this is really awkward. Um, is, is the test results that you got from with, uh, our stink and the lead, is that more indicative of like historical use, or is it indicative of maybe some drift from some of the, like, is, are those chemicals still being used? Or is it indicative of maybe some drift from some of the, like, is the, are those chemicals still being used?
Uh, I don't know what the adjacent orchards are using. I can say we've had a number. Of projects where there was. Orchard use on adjacent property. So for instance, we did work for Jackson County, the airport bought. Forty acres that uh used to be. The old, no, I think they had a wood waste landfill there. But there was orchards adjacent to that property and we collected samples like five feet away from the fence line. And we didn't find any. Uh. Pesticides above action levels. So there were some things that were slightly elevated, but we've repeatedly done that. And found that, yes, wind drifts. Potentially, I mean, if you're like right on the fence line, you might find something, but historically. Yeah, Oregon Department of Agriculture has pretty rigorous uh requirements now for pesticides applications. So if it's a windy day, you don't do it and it's the the mixtures are not inexpensive. So farmers typically aren't going to want to spray on a really windy day because they're going to spend a lot of money on their, that product that may not. Get sprayed on the plants. What as to what, you know, when those more rigorous spray requirements were put into place. I'm not, that's not my area of expertise. I would imagine back in the. Pointies or the thirties, yeah, people were a little more lackadaisical about how they applied their pesticides. But um, we have met, what we have found is that wind drift has not been an issue by the work that we've done in the River Valley.
I guess what I'm asking, I I didn't do a very good. Good job of asking the question. What I'm asking is uh, that's any of any of what you've found currently in use.
Oh, yes, a lot of the. Those pesticides are still, we did find really low levels of, I believe it was. DDE and diiodra and some of those constituents are still used. And what, like I said, lead and ars, lead arsenate. You know, it probably was applied on your organic pairs.
Arsenate, I've been calling it arsenate.
Well, when they say arsenate, it's just the mix.
Oh, okay.
So when when you analyze a soil sample, it's basically it's a lead arsenate is a mixture of lead and arsenic. And so we find those. That's typically the big problem here in the River Valley.
Yeah, well, apparently I am then getting my ignorance about this, so. Professor Roberts, did you have anything?
Well, yeah, so just to just to drill down, so so, you know, we're kind of trained to be, lead is is extremely scary, so. So when you say that the the levels of lead that were found, even if kids are. Putting dirt in their mouths, it's it's not of concern as out as out.
That's correct. If you look in the the tables in the report, so DEQ has. They have risk based concentrations. Uh, we call them, the acronym is RBC, and that's depending upon, and they have it for different exposure pathways. So the most common one and the one that's really hard to eliminate, especially on the field, is the soil ingestion. Uh, thermal contact and inhalation, but dust. So that one is, in this situation, would be probably the most. Uh. Applicable uh pathway for exposure. The other pathways are leaching to groundwater. Right? So you've got this contaminant, it rains, in the winter time, it leaches that contaminant out, it reaches the shallow water table. You've got a well there, you pump the water and potentially it's there. So the only for lead, we did not exceed the soil ingestion and thermal contact and inhalation pathway. The generic risk based concentration. And like I said, those are hyper conservative. Me like super considered. The, we did exceed the leaching to groundwater pathway for lead. Which is what triggered me talking with John McCallum, the. Facilities Director and said, hey, if we did the phase one, I saw it's like, oh, you guys have wells out here. We should sample these wells at an abundance of caution to make sure we did not actually leach stuff into these wells. And cause problems. It's, most of those wells are actually right on the. Southwestern portion of the property, I believe. So they're kind of adjacent to that other orchard. Which could have been a potential source, but like I said, two of the samples were non-detect for lead and one of them. Had a detection, but it was still more than ten times lower than any kind of drinking water standard, so.
And because you're working with a, from a comprehensive list from DEQ, there there isn't a chance that there's some, there was some chemical that was used in the past. It isn't on this list that could be present in the soil that could be dangerous.
I, you know, without the detailed spray records, I can't. Say absolutely not. I can't say the fact that we're using the comprehensive DEQ list of pesticides. So there's uh, if you refer into the report, and by the way, the report's got my email address and telephone number on there. So if anybody has any questions after the fact, feel free to. Ask all kinds of good questions, most of which I should be able to answer. Um, there, so the pesticides consist of four major groups. You'll see there's four tables for the soil samples. There's what is called in Oregon, we call it the Ag seventeen metals. So there's lead and arsenic, but then there's fifteen hundred notes. Then we look at the organochlorine pesticides, that includes like DDE and DDP. And, you know, I think there's ten or fifteen others. We look for organic phosphorus pesticides. And then we look for chlorinated herbicides. And each one of those groups has a very extensive list. So I would say with a high degree of confidence, we probably got everything that could have been used out there, but. I can't guarantee that there could have been, you know, something special that somebody mixed up and tried on the property, so.
I imagine the the list from DEQ is what it is for a reason. Correct. I mean, they didn't just.
Yeah, no, they put that, they they put that uh guidance out in two thousand six and then they updated it in two thousand nineteen, so.
Excellent. If I could indulge, and when you're talking about like uh moving the dirt and putting it on the buffer and you gave an example of what's used for solar, I was just trying to picture that. So does that look like a little like, you know, raised?
Uh, in that case, it's about, it's about twelve acres that's built up about degrees about four or five feet higher than the surrounding.
Okay, so it's actually, it would be like, you know.
I mean, it's other projects where we build uh berms. Right? And especially if it's, you know, you're trying to keep spray, right? Cause I don't know how long that's going to be an orchard to the south. But having a berm actually is, if there is any potential for overspray, a berm is nice. Plus, you know, if it's a residential property, you don't want to hear the. Tractors, you know, going right on your property line. So if you've got a berm, it kind of deadens the noise a little bit.
Yeah, and did they put like solar panels on top of that?
That project is going to wrap up here in the next uh few weeks and we'll get our no further action letter. Um, but the the solar panels have not been installed.
But that's the idea that they would sit on top.
Yeah, they're just going to put, it's a south facing property, but solar people are very excited because it's. I think they're going to make like two and a half megawatts.
I mean, it would be great to see pictures where where it's going to be.
It's off of Coker Butte Road, it's between Coker Butte Road and Owen Drive in East Smithford.
Okay.
And we have talked about solar panel going there in that area.
Yeah, that's really.
You'd have to ask Don, sorry if I'm overstepping. So McCallum, he has a plan that he's super excited.
I can tell you that solar panel construction, because we've been involved in a few of those projects, is pretty easy. And it could, they go in, they don't weigh that much and they just basically like vibrate or push in a little. Aluminum I beam and then it's just a rector set. I mean, then they could get those things up really quickly and it's not much load bearing needs, so.
Did you have something, Jay?
Oh, I was just going to take credit, that was my idea on that one. You were calculating the whole off numbers and it was like, oh, that's crazy. I know what we should do, move it over, pile it up there and do solar panel, done.
You gotta get creative on solving these problems.
Yeah.
Write down his name.
Knowing what it's going to cost to develop this, and you might have to. Did you have something, Rebecca? Somebody had something weird. Did I miss something?
No, I was just indicating that Jay had a question, but he saw it, so.
I want to wow. What else?
And no one's putting anything in chat, so it doesn't, okay. The two people that are online or three people that are online.
I guess I say, but Jonathan, I mean, I've learned more about soil. This work of services.
And he's really good at explaining it, yeah. Um, you know, we listened to the version of this a few days ago and so thank you for all your work and your expertise and your thoughts, so.
Yeah, it's great. It's great for us to hear it.
Yeah, the only other question I I think I said in advance was just whether y'all had thought about, you know, as far as um communicating this to uh publicly. There'll eventually be a public hearing, annexation, all this stuff. Um, is, have you thought about? I mean, I think the solar panels is a real good thing to add to the. To the concept, um but have you thought about how how to communicate this or when to communicate this and and in the city? Um, support.
Yeah, I think I think the first step is really how to get in this annexation process and we, and this is, this is what a lot of work with the community and. And actually the neighbors, I can see they. Right up there uh had a lot of input on kind of where, and this was a, you know, about a six, nine month to a year process. And then once we get um the annexation process and understand what what the conditions will be, then. The board will start talking about phases and input and things of that nature, so.
Great. So there were all these groups put together and they all met several times and came up with these plans and had input on. So that, I think that kind of answers what you were saying.
Yeah, I was just talking about um that, you know, ahead of the public hearing for the annexation, concerns about specifically the concerns about, you know, the. Subuse and stuff like that. Yeah, I know you guys have planned, yeah, you know, a lot of community input through this, but I'm just wondering, thinking about the rest of it.
Yeah, I think this meeting is a good start in the path, you know, a a public meeting that's recorded that. We're sharing a pretty thorough review of the environmental um study and impacts and um. Based on what I've learned this past week. This property is in really, really good shape compared to a lot uh that that is seen around the area considering. The agricultural history and things like that. But yeah, I mean, that's always something that we. Strive to do is really good communication with our stakeholders and um, yeah, certainly of interest, but I think. Things like this are helpful to that end too, for sure, so.
I did have another question, actually a resident asked me to ask, did, uh, does any, this is all before everybody's time, so if nobody knows the answer, that's fine. And I got the question late today, so. Um, did, was there testing on, you probably, uh, with your research, you might be the one to ask, was there testing on the property prior to the current use? Was that in any of the records?
We did not find anything on that.
So this is the first time that there's been any impact.
To my knowledge, it's the first time anybody's collected soil samples out there.
Okay. Um, I do, I I want to uh reiterate what she's saying as we, um, this is something that we talked about. There, because the next step in the process is that there will be a public hearing and the stakeholders are our stakeholders as well, right? It's the whole city of talent. Uh, who who um, you know, has, who have a stake in the what we bring into the city limits. So um. There's every reason to believe that there'll be a. Um, that that'll be a. Uh, be a hearing that people will be interested in. So I do feel like the kind of the best. Thing that we can do is have a really great staff report, which we have all competence in our city manager. And perhaps working together with the city, with the school district and and John here to put together a staff report that's that's gonna. Um, made for a good record and and be really robust with information so that people can. Have a good understanding of what what it is that we're considering. Uh, annexing. So um, I think that that's a really good comment to bring up and. Um, I'd leave it with you guys to think about what that would look like.
Are you talking about, when you say staff report, you're referring to, that's a report that you get for items that come before the council, I would imagine?
Yeah, when there's a hearing, we'll get a staff report.
Okay.
That that's a, that's a given. And this will be part of that staff report. All, everything that's been presented here today will be part of this. The city recorder is here to bring it to our staff report.
Okay.
Um, so it'll all be part of the record. And um, so I, you know, I I I think there's value in in showing. You know, your part in the in the conversation at that point in time. Um, just so.
And and just to piggyback on that, your stakeholders are are students, right? And the families and there's, there are families, you know, in in town who wouldn't get that message because they're not. Moved into the schools anymore or never have been. Which would, you know, be be great to have something, you know, like in town, it needs an interview or something where it's just kind of. You know, explaining, um especially if it's after the clean bill of health from the DEQ, just, you know, da da da, and kind of. People can read it and kind of alleviate concerns um about that.
What we're asking for is that our community is well informed um about historical uses, about the environmental impact studies that you've done, the outcomes, what your plans are moving forward. Uh, and not, I'm not talking about these plans because I think these are pretty well vetted. Um, but the plans for um the voluntary work that you'll be doing with the DEQ, all of those things, I think are going to bring value. It's better for us to discuss, have that information available to the community prior to the public hearing. That's not where we want to discuss it. I mean, that's not what we want to reveal, if you will. So um, I just strongly encourage the school district to to do some outreach. Uh, with talent, with the city of talent and and to. To Eleanor's point, there's just a really large retirement community in talent and. Um, they're not as connected with the school district, they're not as connected with this community, we just want to make sure everybody's aware. What we're annexing. I think, I think.
Some of that's wasn't a hard bit. Conversation in talent. Was this part of the conversation that was the meeting at Talent um Community Center? Initially. There were some public meetings around around this project, hoping we were looking at um. The talent running way and and right, um, that there were several, am I, am I remembering correctly? There were several public meetings held. In talent where we kind of all came together and had conversations about. Moving forward with this, Jay.
Well, yeah, I mean, as part of the UGB, there were some questions about environmental and the district committed to. Doing the phase, you know, doing the phase one and seeing what it showed and then when the, then when the phase two. Was recommended, then that's what they did and that's that step. And the next step would be voluntary cleanup program. And no further action letter, you know, that process is typically done as part of development, right? So you gotta. Get approval to move the lines, get the stuff done, move forward with development, and then you have any equipment out there to build the stuff anyways. And it's then cost effective to do the process to to move the dirt and get the NFA out of DEQ. That's kind of, that's the standard process.
Right, so I guess to speak to your concern of that the public knew, knows what's happening, was I think there were several public meetings held.
I think she's specifically referring to the environment.
Oh, okay, I apologize. I misunderstood.
Some was, well, it is new. I mean, the phase two report we got on the twentieth. Yesterday.
That's right, yeah. Somebody asked me today, why, why did it take you guys so long to get it for us? And I said, because they just got it, it's. Fox Day in March.
Yeah, March, yeah.
So I apologize if I misunderstood about your, your question about. Writing the community mail or project in general.
And so long, if we're doing this, that that of what is typically, you know, is required, but this is so.
Well, there's, there's no requirement, this is annexation, the legislative matter, it's her view of the council and. And so there is no, like, what what you would usually see is criteria for this, other than the steps of the RPS process. With Don and I both served in the RPS process. Very early age of the process. It's a robust process that requires a lot of um community, community engagement. The piece that's new is the uh, is the envi, is the environmental study and also um the the report that. We received last year from the city manager and um and that triggers. Curiosity and more questions and just a a need to be more transparent and really. Uh, upfront with our community about about this property. I'm confident that this this will serve as well. Uh, serves better than not. That's, that's really where I'm coming from and. Um, especially having read the summary and the outcomes and the conclusions of your report, I'm, I I think this is a good thing. Um, so, um, and I, you know, we don't want to sit here and tell you how to do your jobs. We just want to suggest that. Um, given. Given the potential for misinformation here, um, I think that, um, you know, writing, you know, the, doing the. Uh, doing the uh outreach with the community is. Is uh probably. Good idea.
Can I say something?
Please.
So we, a couple of years ago, because we've had this information, um, we hired. So we, a couple of years ago, because we've had this information, um we hired um. A person that helps us get out information and he's amazing and I think that Brent probably wrote on his notepad to let Joe know and. I I I mind melded. Um, so I think that um we we do have, we've learned through the process on how to get. Out to the community and Joe has been doing an amazing job, but I think um. What you're asking for also is for us to keep you in the loop as well. So I think Brett probably wrote that down too, to let after we, to let Joe. Let you guys know when something was coming out. So I have full confidence that Joe will probably hit. As much social media, newsletters, newspapers, new regular news stations. And try to cover it as much as possible. Um, and we also try to do a good job to do it and am. English and Spanish and um to make sure things are accessible to our community. It's something we have found out. And we, I appreciate your concerns, but um it's one thing that I feel like our district has been doing really good lately is. Getting the communication out and not the misinformation, not, you know. We've been trained in misinformation. Um, so I I would like to say that I have full confidence that we will. Go hopefully above beyond what you're asking.
Yeah, that's great.
And and I guess just loop us in so we can.
Yes, oh, yeah.
When people ask us, you know, they can.
Oh, totally, yeah. Joe will be sending you, very Joe to the bus, but.
I think it's important to say, because this is part of the record, that Michael and Brett have both been great to communicate with uh over this. Michael and I have been communicating uh for a year about this and Brett and I had a really great conversation. Uh, maybe a month ago or so, just talking about um, you know, this is the best way to proceed with this information and so that. So that the ending is to install confidence in between you about that, about the project. And um. And that's, that's our motivation as well, so.
Yeah, can I ask something? Because I'm naive about this, but what is the timeline? What are we, what are we looking at? Like, when do you have this meeting that you're talking about um for? What's the next steps, I guess?
It's one of those.
And it's interesting, actually, I think it's scheduled for the second, the council meeting.
So I mean, this uh second would be the uh.
I think it's April sixteenth.
April sixteenth, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have any other suggestions of? My understanding is that typically the hearing is where information like this would be shared, but do you have any other suggestions that weren't mentioned that we could?
So that's the challenge with sharing information and Don knows this uh at a hearing, is that if there's, if there's not. Um, an opportunity for the community to be heard, they want to be heard, here's the, here's the two scenarios. It'd be crickets. And tumbling in that room or we, you know, and have people really interested. And um if we're not able to get through it, then we're putting meetings out. Um, as people are asking us for more information and stuff. So so the one thing I think that um uh that. Um, could support a good process would be just for you guys to engage in communications and outreach.
Yeah, then followed up with a segment in the city staff report that meeting addresses the. Uh, work that's been done to us on the environmental system. Even though it's not a required element of the annexation. That doesn't mean people won't put it up. I mean, so we might as well address it.
That'd be something we would prepare and provide in the room, okay?
So getting ahead of that April sixteenth date, was this information coming out before that is what you're asking for?
Right, and it's important to know that this is not a land use. This is not a land use hearing, so there's no, land use hearings come with a time clock. We're bound by a time clock that we have to. That we have to follow. This is a legislative matter and it's not bound by a time clock, so um it's really better to get some, we find the information.
Thank you. Uh, just a correction, the second meeting in April is April seventeenth.
Thank you. There's a line out the door on the sixteenth and.
Well, and hopefully this was helpful to you all and to senior council and to those who couldn't make it tonight to. Watch back and read the report and I think Jonathan's um. Uh. I want to call it testimony, it's not testimony, it's not corporate proceeding, um but his information that he shared um was helpful. I'm sure there was other better words that came over there, thank you.
I just sent a report.
I do want to reserve uh for our council an opportunity for us to discuss the results and the outcomes as well. So we're here to get information. That's, that was the purpose of this meeting was to. We've got the environmental reports, uh we've heard um great expert uh testimony tonight. Uh, we'll have, we'll take an opportunity to review it and to make sure that we understand it. Um, because again, like, we don't want to be doing that during the hearing process.
Sure.
So uh, I don't know when that will happen or how that will happen. I'll talk to Dave Bowman about it today, so I know it will happen and and Gary. Um, but uh we just, we just, we just haven't come to the. Right. That conclusion about dates and that sort of stuff, but certainly would happen in a public forum and. Y'all would have the opportunity to join that conversation if you wish.
Yeah, we could even make, well, I guess I can't speak to you. If we can make you available or not, Jonathan, but um I I imagine it's a matter of an hourly rate, um.
If you have a particular date where you'd like me to.
Yeah.
Kind of just let me.
That might be helpful if it's something on your agenda to have, you know, to ask any questions.
I want to reiterate that John invited people to ask questions at his email.
Yeah.
And this reporting will go out, so um, you know, that's, that's all part of like what we're hoping for, is to open this conversation up, let people ask questions and let's. And I think, Gary, I thought you were starting to say something.
No, I I think I can work with um. Your staff to come up with um information to meet with the staff report, but.
I think the mayor's observation of getting information out even ahead of that. It's a good. Okay, and you've got the channels to do that.
Mm-hmm.
And then just so I'm sure I understand, the no further action, the board has decided to go and and try to get the no further action from D E Q.
It's not something the board's taken action on, but it's already in the, that's a superintendent level.
Okay, so you are, yeah, okay, okay, great.
Thing that's already in the works, yeah, yeah, that's, that is our plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And and the buffer thing is still in the imagining stage or?
Well, we'll have to see what the D E Q kind of says for no further, and if that's an option, then we'll, yeah.
Okay.
We hope that's the answer.
She wants it, she wants it.
I wanted to fucking talk about it, like, it's gonna happen.
But I do want to uh let you guys know something I am going to ask when we get to the next meeting. Doesn't mean I'll get it, but I'm going to ask for it and that will be as part of the packet. Or the annexation to hear, to get a report from the school district about their plan. What is, what is the plan, what's going to be the steps and the plans? So that we have that as part of the the application and packet. Uh, so it'll be, it'll be part of the record at that point in time.
Plan for development or plan for?
Uh, the, you know, your steps as you go through this process. Um, and then um, like I said, you know, we'll talk about it and the council will agree with me, but that's what I'll be asking for. And I feel like if I tell you now. I'm trying to be like Michael and I have been talking for a year. I'm trying to like get as in front of this stuff with. If all of the information that I can, so there's no perception of of gotchas or. Gosh, why didn't they tell us that, you know, a while back and um and and really. Just because I asked or something doesn't mean women get it, so, but you know ahead of time. It might be just a matter of wicking out uh some of the stuff right out.
I think another great option, so both of my boys, uh I spent a lot of cold fall afternoons at Culver Fields at regional. That's a great little school meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And it'd be great if they had like a, put all the soil that needs to be moved like on the property edge. The buffer and have like a hill. For the cross-country. And right now it's all flat.
It's flat.
Really build character when it gets out.
The Fortemexers are going to be out there reporting, so just know that. Listen, I also want to say, my son played ball on that field and um. Uh, my heart uh is in the same place as your heart is. We need those fields, we need the facilities, we need all of the things that you guys are planning. And uh, we know that.
Appreciate that, thank you, yeah. Yeah, for me, one of the big things that I am. Focus on right now is um services for families, so um, you know, we're we're finding um ways to. How can we bring in more preschool options for our families? Um, and um, and and then after school care, um, we have it. It, we need more, we need access to more and that's, that's another use that this property will um. Uh, is intended to serve with with some community partners is um access to. To more readily available and affordable after-school care for our families um is is another, it's not just sports complexes.
Well, I should mention that, because it is a high line again.
Yeah.
Kids both went to boys and girls, uh girls' college, and that's the king in in talent, I bet, and so I also recognize those needs as well.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. Thank you. Thank you so much. Anything else? All right, we're here, thank you so much. I know, I didn't have a cattle.
I have an extra, my friend.
Is Nancy Stone?
Oh, she.